The July 23, 2020 Special Meeting on Marion County School Board is called to order. Purpose of this meeting is to hold a public hearing on the tentative millages and budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2, here. Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1, here. Mrs. Nancy Throh, District 4, here. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3,
here. Mrs. Kelly King, District 5, here. Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent,
here. Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney, here.
Let's please stand for the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent Dr. Diane Gullett.
Thank you, Chairman Cummings, members of the board. In accordance with Florida statutes, the board approved a budget presentation timeline on May 12, 2020. For your convenience, an additional copy of the budget presentation timeline is being provided today, and it's in the front pocket of your budget notebook. Work sessions to review the tentative budget being received today have been scheduled for August 6, 2020, and August 13, 2020, as well as August 20, 2020, if necessary.
Thank you. May I have a motion to receive the tentative budget approved if for advertising purposes only, and set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 28, 2020, at 5:15 p.m. in the boardroom?
移到
Moved by Ms. or seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
The proposed budget will be posted on Marion County School District website Thursday morning, July 24, 2020. Please be sure to bring this notebook with you to each work session and budget-related public hearing. There being no further, business men have a motion to adjourn.
移到
Moved by Ms. Ms. Throh, seconded by Ms. Stacy. Meeting is adjourned at 11:02. We're going to flow right back into our prior meeting. Y'all liked that one, didn't ya?
Yeah.
Um, while they're setting up, listen, all right, there's a young lady here that needs to speak because she's in school. We need to get her through here. So I'm going to bring up Ms. Francesca Mitchell. We'll hear her, and then we'll bring Ms. Stacy Oliver up after there.
Good morning. My name is Francesca Mitchell, and I am the President of the NAACP Marion County Youth Council, and I am also a proud incoming senior at one of the best schools, Westport. First, I want to thank the school board for the courage it has thrown in making tough decisions that go against some of the ideological stances on masks, social distancing, school reopening, and what students' bodies can or cannot take in this age of COVID-19. Today, I am here to ask for your consideration and courage. Once again, I am requesting that you reconvene the Student Code of Conduct Committee to consider removing the Item 2 under Free Speech Expression Assimilation with the sole intent of determining whether or not, in this age of activism, where students across the country are creatively protesting by sitting or kneeling during the Pledge of Allegiance or National Anthem, is a necessary enforceable district policy this year. As COVID-19 spiked and videos of public killings of Americans like Ahmaud Arbery and George Floyd were released, students irrespective of race began to mobilize and engage in creative ways to show their discontent. A local issue in another state quickly became a national movement that even touched Marion County. We witnessed these moments as many of my peers chose to creatively protest at this year's graduation ceremonies, and when nearly a thousand young people who have, who are currently high school students, organized and participated in a collection of marches and protests in our city. So I am assured that this will continue once school reopens. We, the members of the Marion County Youth Council, urge the Marion County School Board to consider this new social climate. We urge you to consider whether we want our schools to be used as a vehicle to punish and penalize students for engaging in the true concept of Americanism, or whether this board will find creative ways to transform these moments into a true lesson on democracy and what is good about America. We strongly believe if a student is not infringing on others' right to participate, then no harm is caused. Our schools and our staff have so many other issues that will take president this year, and policing personal creative protest should not be one of those tasks. We also strongly urge our school board to consider an in-service on cultural competency with students and teachers. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your courage. We welcome our, this opportunity to also meet with the Student of Conduct Committee to share our concerns, thoughts, and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. All right. Board, you guys heard what she said. We'll discuss that a little bit later. Um, Ms. Vianello, put back in your hands. Ms. Mitchell, we will address that towards the end of the meeting.
Well, good morning, Reverend Chair Cummings,
Good morning.
Chair Throh, Board, Attorney Green, and Superintendent Gullett. As you know, we've been answering employee questions for weeks, and we wanted to bring to you today one of, or one question that has quite a few components in it that has been one of the most pressing questions, and answer that for you today and for anyone watching, and also talk about a few additional things. So, this employee question, what do I do if I need to take time off due to a COVID illness or quarantine for either myself or my child? We have employees with children, of course, so that is certainly a consideration. It is very important for our employees to know that if they have some kind of a COVID illness, if they test positive for COVID, if they are told to quarantine by a healthcare provider or the Department of Health, and/or if they have any symptom of illness, they, and they get tested. So that's a very important piece for the symptom of illness. If they have a symptom of illness and decide to go get tested, then they will qualify for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act provision, which is called that emergency paid sick leave you've heard me talk about. So, in those scenarios, employees will be given 10 paid days, paid for by Marion County Public Schools, and paid at the rate of their regular rate of pay, 100%. And if they qualify.
What if they tested negative?
That does not matter. The federal provisions say that if you have COVID-like symptoms and you go to get tested, then you qualify for that provision. So that is there for them. However, once they exhaust that 10-day provision paid at 100% of their regular rate of pay, it is gone. That provision is in place until December 31, 2020. And whether they extend that or not, we certainly have not heard anything about that.
Can they use it more than once?
They cannot use it more than once. However, they can use it, they don't have to use it all at once if they don't need it. So, that is there for them to protect them. They do not have to use their own personal sick leave for that. That is simply leave given to them paid at 100% of their regular rate of pay.
And that is 10 days.
It is 10 days.
And most quarantines were 14 days.
Thank you. In some situations, it goes past 10 days. In those cases, it is important for employees to remember they have at their disposal regular FMLA that they can take if they need to for an extended illness, and they also have district medical leave that they can take. Their accrued sick leave is also there for several days, that, you know, they could take that as well. If their child has been quarantined by a healthcare provider or the Department of Health, or has tested positive for COVID, and they need to stay home to care for their child, they're healthy, they just need to stay home to care for their child, they also will qualify for the emergency paid sick leave of up to 10 days.
And they do that, so then they would do it twice because it would be for their child that time, or still just once?
It is once. And this is a federal provision. We don't make these rules. This is coming down from that Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It allows 10 days for any of six reasons. And for a child needing care would be one of those reasons. It's actually number four. If you stay home and use your 10 days for that, you get paid at the rate of 2/3 of your pay by Marion County Public Schools. After that, if they need additional time, they can use the extended FMLA that is available to them, but it would only be, it wouldn't be paid for by the employer. So they certainly, again, just like with their own illness, they have Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, and they can use that to continue to care for their child if they need to, but would have to use their own sick leave to continue to get paid. So, there certainly are provisions for situations for an ill employee or an employee with symptoms, or for an employee with children who are quarantined or are positive with COVID. And the way they apply for that is simply to do the same exact thing that they do to apply for any other leave in our county. They tell their supervisor and secretary. The secretary applies, or for the leave for them on their behalf through our Equity and Ethics Department, and then that just goes as normal. So, that brings me to my next slide, and some possible recommendations for you that I'm going to broach today, and then come back next Thursday and talk about more in depth. So, in the scenario that we just discussed, let's say I'm an employee. I can either use that 10 days of paid sick time, paid for by the county, or if we had this option, I could possibly telework instead and continue working. We need to have a discussion about teleworking for several situations. That employee question being one of them. I'm ill, but not that ill. How many times have you heard someone test positive, but their symptoms are slight? Or they're asymptomatic and don't have symptoms at all? Or we've sent them home for COVID symptoms, but they're very rare? How many times have you heard an employee say, "Oh, I'm here with a headache and, you know, runny nose and a little bit of a sore throat, but I'm going to work through it because it's too hard, you know, it's just, I don't want to take the day off." So, many of our employees would work through symptoms like that, and now possibly could be sent home, and if we opened up the option or just a conversation about teleworking, many of our employees might choose to continue if the job allows for it, if the job duties allow for it, and if their health allows for it to telework. Now, we know there are classifications that that simply cannot be done. I want to bring this back to you next Thursday and have a conversation about it. We all said, "This is a little bit too big for you to be looking at in detail today." We need to focus on the other things. And it's all ready, and everything's written up, and we just need to broach it to you and get your ideas and recommend and final approvals. So, some other scenarios, just for your consideration regarding teleworking. Should an employee be able to telework in a COVID-related situation, if possible, based on job duties and health status, if their child is sent home due to symptoms? They are sent home due to symptoms. They, they have light symptoms with COVID. They're high risk due to a possible age category or a pre-existing health condition, and their doctor puts that in writing. The employee has chosen to teach Marion County Public Schools online. Should they be allowed to telework because they're teaching our Marion County Public School online learning? What about employees whose, who have decided that their child will be going through Marion County Public Schools online, which we offer? So they have a child at home now. Is that something to look at in regard to teleworking? Those are questions I leave you with so that we can have a bigger discussion later. If we don't allow telework, some of the things that could happen could be that a front office staff is exposed to the point where they're quarantined, and the guidance clerk, the guidance counselor, the secretary, possibly the principal, who is carrying on the important work? So those are just considerations for that piece. Another consideration for you, which we'll discuss more in depth, and I'm already working with Attorney Green on, thank you, Ms. Green, is a resolution, possibly, something for discussion, to allow for some leave flexibility. It's important for you to know, and you probably already do, they're your policies. Our school board policies currently have language, and so do our collective bargaining agreements with the unions have language stating things like, "Leave in excess of 10 days is not possible." Even if you have the leave. I have, let's say, three months of sick leave, accrued sick leave of my own. But after 10 days, regardless of how much leave I have, we have things in place that an employee, after that, at that time, need to either take FMLA or district medical leave if they have an extended illness and cannot come back on the 11th day. Your board policy also says, "Leave in excess of 10 uncompensated days requires application for another approved leave, an approved leave." So, let's talk about why that might be a problem. In the question we discussed before, if that's a new employee and they need to stay home for their child, they might only have four days at their disposal. Let's take a teacher, for instance. In their first month, they get 10 of, or four of their 10 days upfront. If they have to quarantine for longer than 14 days, and we have some situations where people have simply not gotten better within the 14 days, they would, if it's themselves that are ill, they would have FMLA usually. But if you're a new employee, FMLA by federal law is only available after 12 months of working. District medical leave is only available after six months of working. So the only thing at their disposal would be their four sick days that we have provided for them, and after that is exhausted, this new teacher goes on uncompensated leave. And with our current policies, that would require a counseling letter that just, not discipline, but a letter that says, "You're uncompensated, and please take note, and here's what we need you to do." And if they took continued time, of course, then we would move forward with what our procedures are. And it would eventually lead to dismissal, abandonment. And in this COVID time, I think it's important to look at those policies, and Attorney Green is looking at those, and told us that when we thank you, and we will be having conversations, and we hope to have something for you next Thursday. We'll also be having conversations with the union about that. Another situation, well, another school board policy says that an employee cannot be, cannot take leave for more than part or all of two years. So let's say we have an employee who had cancer and has worked through that for the past two years. There is no more leave at, at her disposal. She has to work for 12 full months before she can take advantage of district medical leave. She wouldn't qualify for Families, Family Medical Leave Act because you have to work 1,250 hours in order to gain that again, and those are federal provisions. So, there are circumstances where we might want to have some flexibility with those things. So the last consideration would be, if we're on campus and we see someone who's symptomatic. Let's say we see them, or someone comes up and makes a complaint that someone's sneezing, they've got runny eyes, they're, you know, coughing, I'm concerned. According to the Department of Health guidelines and the CDC guidelines, we are to send home any staff member that is symptomatic with any symptom of illness. So, we send the employee home, and maybe against their will, because like I said, many employees work through headaches and, you know, symptoms. So, one question is, do we pay the employees for the remainder of that day? It's 11 o'clock, maybe it's 9 o'clock. I'm sending you home for the rest of the day? I need you to either go to your primary care physician or the Department of Health, make some, you know, check on your, you might want to go get tested. I'm going to pay you for the rest of the day. After that, you need to look into emergency paid sick leave. We have the question on the table for possible teleworking, that kind of thing. So that's a consideration as well for our employees. So, there's a lot of things to consider with our employees. There are a lot of questions. We certainly know that with all of the questions we've been answering in the last several weeks. We have tried to compile those things, consider each one of them, and we're working on a full set of procedures for staff and supervisors. In fact, it is completely written, but I wrote it with certain guidelines in place that we need to discuss to see if they're viable. And we are going to begin talking to principals about them, because some of them certainly we can put in place, and others, like the teleworking and the paying employees to go home for the one day, those things we need to discuss, and the resolution. So, please know that that is already underway. We will bring that to you next Thursday so that you can see that. We can get you a copy of what that looks like. And in addition, we are putting together an employee information packet. So if an employee does have to go home, or an employee calls in ill and they're staying home, or if they've tested positive, we will have a full packet for the employee. The packet includes an employee letter, just like our students get a letter, and you heard Andrea talking about that earlier. On the back of that will be the DOH guidelines that tell them exactly what to, you know, they can expect. Our letter also outlines that. It will include the procedures, because the procedures don't just talk about the fact that when employees need to be excluded, it talks about what they have to do for return, you know, what they have to do, and timelines for different types of situations related to COVID. It also makes it very clear that if the employee's symptoms are due to a pre-existing health condition, then get that to us now. You know, let's say you know you have allergies, and you have an allergist. Well, go to your doctor and, and get him to write that now, and give it to your administrator, your supervisor. And that way, that could very well save you from being sent home for symptoms that are COVID-like but are not COVID. So, we're trying to give employees as much information as we can so that they can stay in school, and students can stay in school, and we can continue with the business at hand, which is student learning. In addition to the letter, will be a COVID-19 situational flow chart, and you know we've already have that Florida, or Families First Coronavirus Act flow chart. So certainly we'll provide that one. The COVID-19 situational flow chart talks about what do I do if I have symptoms, if I test positive, if I've been quarantined. The second one talks about what do I do if I want to apply for leave. So we're covering the gamut, and then it will have a frequently asked questions document, which was built considering all of the questions that we've had coming in. We've tried to make it easy for employees to know. And this can be handed to them when they're sent home, if that happens, or emailed to them if they're already home. Are there any questions?
I have one. You talked about some of these things you've already written. Are you presenting them to us next week?
I think that was part of the plan.
Is it possible to get that ahead of next week's workshop? Because I really would like to review it so that I can have questions. You may answer them during the presentation, but I really would like to see it prior to the workshop.
I had suggested that to Mr. Vianello, that we just need to, that would be a very good thing if we could put it in your box, and I think that certainly is something that would be good. If you can look at it and have your questions ready, that would be wonderful.
So are you going to email that to us, or will you have it? I'd rather have it.
Email is probably safer.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, absolutely.
I agree. Thanks for bringing that up, because, and, and things are moving so quickly. It does make it difficult to get supporting documents, you know, on board docs and things like that, ahead of meetings. And I know the community would appreciate, whenever possible, having whatever's going to be discussed, you know, somewhere before the, the meetings begin, and, and me as well for the same reasons as Ms. McCall shared.
Certainly, certainly, certainly. All right, anything else? I thank you for your time.
We look forward to some vivid discussions.
Continued spirited discussions.
Absolutely. Do I need to wipe this off?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, oh, there it is. Phillip set the stage, didn't he?
Yay.
And I'll turn it over. All right.
It's not quite good afternoon yet, so good morning, Pastor Chair,
Good morning.
Madam Co-Chair, Dr. Gullett, Board members, Elena, Ms. Green. I'm here to finish on the next step, which is the instructional calendar. You should have a couple documents on your thing that I will refer to. You should have the one-page Plan A, Plan B. So I'd ask you to make sure you have that available as we go forward. Right now, we're working on, what you see here are three plans for adjustment to the instructional calendar. This page right here is a quick overview. We've developed these plans based on feedback that we've received from lots of people, the board included, and basically to include more time for preparation, that not only is PD for the teachers and staff, but preparation for cleaning our schools and getting everybody trained on time. With all three plans, we looked at what changed, what the cost was, and what the impact was. And understand with all three plans, there's not a cost, because there's no instructional contract. There are no contract being added days to. So for paydays, there's not a cost.
No additional cost.
There's no additional cost to the district, because we're not extending contract days. And the following slides will dig deeper in this, but every plan includes extra days for preparation or PD. It does meet our 900-hour instructional minute time. The staff reporting dates are a little bit different on each one, and the start dates for students are a little bit different on each one, and we'll dig deeper into the, into each slide. As I said, all plans, all three plans do meet statutory requirement of the 900 hours. Because remember, it's 180 days or 900 hours equivalent, and all three plans meet, they're less than 180 days of face time, but it does meet the 900-hour equivalent minute for statute. There was brought up last week about the waiver from the governor. There's been no clear-cut information given about what that means of waiving that requirement. The information that I've received, based upon my work with charter schools, with working with charter schools in the opening, is that that waiver was meant to relax with charter schools in the opening, is that that waiver was meant to relax the FTE requirement for face time for online learning. Not necessarily say, if you want to open three weeks later, those fifteen days you don't have to worry about. We haven't gotten any um information on that. So all three of our plans do meet the nine hundred hour requirement for FTE funding. So all of these will be fully FTE funding, we won't lose any FTE money on that, and that's important to know. We're gonna look at Plan A. So I'd refer you now to your, your one-page um calendar that you should have for Plan A, because it's a, a good one-page look at it that. Extra time for preparation is included in this, so there's three weeks of preschool that we talked about that. All staff will report as scheduled, so there's no adjustment to any start time for any staff. All early release days are converted to full days, and that's so that we can meet our nine hundred hours. Thanksgiving and Christmas break remain the same. That's pre-published, we've known that, so we don't want to mess with that. Most weather days are intact. If you look at the one-page in the bottom corner, you can see the weather days that are there for Plan A. So I know we talked about that last week, that we've got COVID, but we've got a hurricane in the Gulf now, it's coming, so just because we have COVID doesn't mean hurricanes don't come. So we still, most, most our hurricane days are still intact, and so you can see that on that. Um, and then May twenty-sixth is the last day for all students, seniors included. Traditionally, seniors get out a week early, but in order to meet our nine hundred hour requirement, it's for all students. Looking to get the opportunities for this, additional PD for all staff. We talked about when Mr. Leopard was up about a lot of the deep cleaning that needs to happen, that gives us three extra weeks for that preparation to occur as well. Planning time is increased for teachers, because with MCPS online, that gives increased planning time. Again, I just talked about the facility preparation, and then also, we talked about um last week, teachers' reporting on August third has already been published, but these next two weeks of no school could cause some issues for um childcare-type things, and so possible hybrid work time, but we're working through that. We don't have that plan in place yet, but that is something that we are looking at and that we will continue with that. On Plan A, also, the union has looked at Plan A, and we're okay. When we get into Plan B and C, there are some issues that are gonna have to be dealt with, you know, in conversation with the union, because it does involve contract language. Also, if you look on your one-page for A, if you look in March, spring break is as scheduled, but since we shifted the calendar, the third nine weeks ends after spring break. So that means students will go on spring break, come back for three extra days of the nine weeks, which academically is not the best, but we publish spring break. The board, you have the option of moving that spring break if that is what you want. But right now, in this plan, the spring break is still to where it was. And again, um, the, the challenges that we have on this is it's shorter instructional time with face time for students. We do meet the nine hundred hours, but it's less days that the students are in front of our teachers, which does have a testing impact. Also, the childcare issue for all parents that work, not just for MCPS employees, but for all parents, that we're asking them now two extra weeks of, you know, you know, no school, so that is an impact. Um, and also lost PD, professional development opportunities during the year, since we've converted all early release days, and going forward, we don't have those anymore. So that's Plan A. We'll go on Plan B, so on your one-page, if you want to look at Plan B. We created Plan B in order to provide more seat time, face time in front of students with teachers. And so Plan B includes two weeks of preschool training, not the three. Um, the entire calendar is moved forward one week, which does have an impact on when paychecks are issued. Um, all early release days and teacher work days will remain in place, and June third is the last day for all students, again, seniors included, so that we can meet the nine hundred hour seat time for that. The opportunities for Plan B is, again, more additional PD time for all staff, and again, more time to prepare schools, more instructional time in front of parents, I mean, the students in front of the teachers, there's more instructional time. We honor parent requests because that they, that we had the survey out where they're picking traditional or MCPS online, so when we start school, um, on August twenty-fourth, all students will report either traditional or MCPS online, so it does honor that parent request. Um, again, um, the other opportunity is possible hybrid work option, but again, we're working on that, that has not been finalized. The important thing to know on this is a barrier is delay of paychecks. That's for all contracted employees that contract, the paychecks will be shifted, some as much as two weeks, based upon starting, you know, later in the thing. But again, there's no cost, we're not adding instructional days, we're just delaying the paycheck. That paycheck will get made up on the back end, but they'll be doing without a paycheck earlier. And so that's Plan B. And again, this is, this not, has not been cleared with the union, the union, this is something that we would have to discuss with them. The only plan that the union has seen in the standard is Plan A. So we have Plan C going forward. We created Plan C because we had feedback from last week when we talked about possibly opening a week of online school before we came back to the traditional brick and mortar, and so that's what we came up with when we worked with Plan C. Staff reports as scheduled, so there's no adjustment of the paycheck when you receive a paycheck. August seventeenth, all students will start online learning as a group, so one hundred percent online learning for the first week, starting on the seventeenth. All early release days are converted to full days. The first and third teacher work days are converted to student days. Again, this is the section, work days are a bargain into the teacher contract. And so if we convert those teacher work days, that is something that we'll have to address with the union. And so that could work there. Some weather makeup days are lost down there, and then May twenty-sixth is the last day for K eleven students, seniors would still get out a week early as traditionally on Plan C. And so those are your plans, A, B, and C. Again, with Plan C, we talked about opportunities and barriers. The big barrier with Plan C is the technology barrier, because if we open up a week er, on the seventeenth for one hundred percent online, we have to get devices out to students again. We still haven't received all devices back from students when we did it in the spring. So again, getting devices out for all students and equity for students. Some students have the ability to do online, some parents knew that they didn't have that ability at home, that's why they chose the traditional line. But this way, it's, it's an equity question of students, who's getting um technology, who doesn't, who has it or who doesn't. Um, childcare for all working parents on this one, again, is an issue. We have loss of teacher work days, which is a barrier. Again, those are bargained into the contract. And then the timing of spring break, because again, when the semester en, or the nine weeks ends, do we want to have that come back? And so those are the three plans.
So when you say what, uh, for Plan A, and we talk about loss of face time with our students, yet we've removed the half-days, so how do we have loss of face time?
Well, the days, we, because normally, on our normal calendar, we're a hundred and eighty days, this calendar is only a hundred and seventy days.
But we've removed the half-days.
We've removed half-days, so we're gaining two hours of face time in that, but we're still less face time than if we were a hundred and eighty days.
Plan A is really going by instructional minutes.
Yes. All plans, all these plans are going by instructional minutes, and so it's a hundred, or nine hundred hours of instructional time.
So Dr. Gullett, um, in looking at Plan A, because that's the one I'm really leaning towards, in your opinion, that lost time, how significant do you think that'll be? I think we're gonna spend a whole year anyway getting kids back, so I don't know, your opinion, I would.
Certainly, Ms. McCall, thank you for that. And I, I, if I could start by saying, these are not fixed options. These are grouped into three, and you can pick and choose in a fluid manner between what works, so I just want to say that first. That's one of my greatest concerns. If you look at the number of days, um, for Plan A, it's the fewest, and so I, I'm concerned about that, but we did look at the hours. So I never like it when we look at what's best for students, that we have fewer opportunities and full days to be with them. This, in essence, in Plan A, is student and staff, it's, it's a, it works for both, but I, I am concerned about fewer days with students, that, that's just a concern that I have.
Can I ask a question? You guys that do the calendar, um, since I've been on the board, different, from different superintendents, we sat and we talked about the start date, you know, back, would it be the seventeenth or the, as we've changed different dates, nobody ever even mentioned talking about it along, like, when we start next year, because I remember we've moved years up before, where we started sooner than we really thought we were. Nobody's ever mentioned teacher pay being involved in that, like, I mean, that's never come up, maybe they internally did it, but it never.
Well, usually in the past, when we've, and I understand the concept of moving the day up in August was an attempt to get the semester to end before Christmas. Because academically, that's best, you know, to finish a semester, take your midterms on, at high school, and then start a new semester afresh. When I was in school, we started in, in August, we came back after Christmas break, reviewed, took midterms and all that, so when we did.
That's not my question, because I know about all that, because even if we started on the seventeenth, we could still take our exams before, so, but when we came up with our date of the tenth originally, because that's kind of earlier than we usually come back, isn't it?
We've gone, we've come back on the tenth in the last three years.
Has it been?
Yeah.
I was thinking of the seventeenth on.
Yeah, and when we, when we made that initial change going forward, we did that in January, and so teachers and staff and everybody knew well in advance. You know, here we are, end of July, start of August, if we're saying, okay, we're gonna move school back a date, so now teachers, staff, you're gonna have to delay a paycheck, you know, that's pretty difficult.
So, but if we moved it, like, because we, there were times when, it's been kind of crazy for, like, the last eight years, there's been different, like, early, like, start dates and stuff. Um, so, like, if we had started on the seventeenth, if we had decided as a board, okay, we're gonna start school on the seventeenth this year because of some sort of something that was happening, we would not have done that, because it would not have worked with the teacher's pay?
I, 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 I think, I think we would have done it, because in January, they'd have a lot more, they'd have six months to prepare and understand that that's coming, as opposed to a week.
I mean, I like Plan A, is my personal.
I just, I think it flows better, I don't like that we have less instructional days, but I think it gives parents what they've asked for. We've asked for all that PD upfront, that three weeks, I think we need that to get teachers really secure on teaching distance learning, because it may happen again, and they need to, they need to be much more prepared than they were. And it also gives us plenty of time to get everybody trained on how to disinfect, what's my role, I'm, you know, I'm having emails from teachers now, are they cleaning in between class changes, is that in my job? So there's a lot that we need to do to prepare our staff. So I like the three weeks, I like Plan A because our teachers still have their work days, they've still got the holidays, um, I, and again, I think we're gonna spend the whole year. Hopefully, hopefully, the Department of Education will listen to our Superintendent's Association, listen to all the associations that are saying no standardized tests this year. Which will help us really get our kids back, there will not be that pressure of standardized test.
Absolutely, and we're go, we're getting ready for Mr. Whitehouse to introduce what the training would look like, so what I would ask is if you would allow us to move forward with that piece, then you'll have even more information to decide how you would like to proceed with options, because I too agree, we, we have talked about a, a myriad of many different options, and A, I will say, as a superintendent, seems to be the best option considering the broad spectrum of needs. However, I would reserve that for Mr. Whitehouse to come and share what has been requested of what does the training look like? If we're going to invest even two or three weeks in training, what does that look like for all staff? So if we could proceed with that, then we, you'll have some more information.
Just doing my part.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. You didn't get grilled.
Great modeling.
You were ready, though. Hey, I know you were ready.
What we're gonna do is we'll discuss that on the workshop, everything, get everything all squared away with the teachers and get everybody.
Soon as, soon as Mr. Whitehouse gets there.
As soon as Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Go nowhere, Mr. Ayers.
Good morning, Board Members. Uh, so each of you should have been provided this handout that has our PD options for one, two, and three weeks of professional development for teachers.
Yes.
So I will refer you to that document now, so we can talk through some of what we have planned right now. The first column you'll see on the left is our current plan, so currently with our instructional calendar, we have one week of preschool, that's typical every year. Um, we, we focus on a lot of different things, we tend to have one district in-service day available for us to do district-based training during that week, which this year for secondary is August the fourth, elementary, it's August the fifth. So you'll see on, if we have just one week of planning, our biggest focus right now is health and safety of our students, social-emotional support, and we know that's gonna require a lot of work to prepare, to make sure that our, our staff are trained, to make sure that we're ready to receive those children and provide the support they need when they come back to school. So that's gonna be a key focus with that one week of training. You'll notice some of the things that are built in there, these are part of our district-based training that we're gonna be rolling out. Um, so Habitudes is the secondary version of what we're doing in Sanford Harmony, focusing on social-emotional learning for our students. The SEDnet training is gonna look at, um, part of it cultural sensitivity, um, but the other part of it is also going to be dealing with trauma, because we're gonna have a lot of students who are returning back to us, um, that have been through trauma in the last few months, and so that training is going to help our staff better prepare for both of those issues as we come back to school. And then we're also going to focus on those fourth-quarter standards that we know were not um taught to the level and depth that we would have liked when we were completely in a remote learning setting, and so how are we re-embedding those standards this year throughout our curriculum apps to make sure that we are teaching the current standards, but also addressing to make sure that we have adequately um taught those standards as well. In the two-week plan, if you chose one of the options as two weeks of planning, what we can do is obviously extensive in terms of being able to provide more training for our staff to better prepare. And while we certainly do not like less days with our children, what really will help us is being able to make sure we can not only attend to the health and safety of our students, but provide for high-quality instruction. And that's really what's going to make the difference with our, with our students, is that every minute that we have them, we're focused on s- health and safety and high-quality instruction for all of them. So you'll see, one of the things that we really need to work on with our teachers is technology training. We know that there is a good potential that we're going to have a second interruption, either at a school or perhaps even district-wide. So part of that is gonna be making sure that all of our staff have adequate training in the technology that they need to be able to operate remotely if a school, a classroom, or the whole district was closed down. Our district is shifting towards Microsoft Teams, that's what we would like to be able to use with all of our staff, it meets all of our needs, um, we have done some training in the fourth quarter, we provided some training this summer. We would like to start pushing in that direction a little bit more, if we have more time to train all of our staff. We are currently bringing in, uh, next week, we're gonna be bringing in lead teachers that we can train to go back and train the teachers at their staff. So the more time that we have during preschool to work with them, it does take a long time to learn a new technology platform for our teachers, to be able to build their courses and to really learn how that operates. And so the more time that we have, obviously, the more we can get in-depth and be better prepared for that potential second interruption. We would also like to be able to um support some of the mandatory trainings that the state has every year for us. Those include identifying, reporting child abuse and neglect, um, our Alice protocol, those are. Those are things that we have to do by state statute every year. And that additional training time at the beginning would allow us to do that from the front load and not having to ask teachers to address those during the school year. We would also build in a lot more school-based trainings during that extra week for staff to not only do in-room preparations for their classrooms to get set up, but also for us to make sure that we are providing the instructional needs for our staff to be ready for student return, whether that's through traditional or online setting. That can include collaborative planning opportunities for grade-level teams, department-level teams, PLCs, which we can include art, music, CTE, other programs, or we can do some district-level PLCs to really talk through how are we going to meet the academic needs of our students across the district. And then, obviously, continuing to provide additional social emotional learning for faculty and staff and students, and also building in some parent-professional learning opportunities to make sure that our parents are well-informed about what we're, we're gonna be doing when we come back to school and that they are ready to support us from the home end as well. The next column shows you what we could do with three weeks of professional development. And while you'll notice there's not a whole lot more titles of things on there, what we have with three weeks is more opportunity to go in-depth with what we're asking to do. So, you'll notice, we can build in more hours for Microsoft Teams, which is, again, it's very difficult for teachers who have never used this technology to dig in and do so effectively. So, the more time that we have built in, the better off our teachers are gonna be prepared. But most importantly, the more time we have, we also have more time for teachers to be in their classrooms, getting their classrooms set up for what they need to be safe with their students, to make sure that they are fully prepared and ready to operate either through MCPS online or through a traditional setting. More time for them to collaborate with their peers, to make sure that they really know what it is that they are ready to do when we come back on August the 24th in person. So, again, these just show you district trainings that we would like to provide, and then also school-based trainings that we will work with principals on to make sure that they are meeting the needs of all of our staff. And now, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kyron to come up. She's gonna show you on the backside. We'll draw your attention because we don't wanna forget our support staff, and we will be providing training for our support staff as well.
Good morning. Okay, as Mr. Whitehouse mentioned, I'm gonna talk to you about our non-instructional group, as well as our support staff that work with our students in our schools each day. They are another key and vital group of employees that impact our students and our teachers on a daily basis. The current plan on the back page, for the majority of our non-instructs, including our parent professionals that are at our school sites, the current plan has them coming back two full days, the week of August 3rd. So, during those two days, certainly, a main focus would be on the health and safety piece, training on all new and current safety procedures and protocols at their individual school sites. What that looks like, making sure that they are comfortable in the day-to-day routines that they will be performing with teachers, with students. The other main focus that two days would give us would be, we would have a heavy emphasis, again, with the SEDNET training that we would make sure that our non-instructional staff was able to attend, dealing with trauma and stress and cultural sensitivity. The two-week plan, which gives our, the majority of our non-instructional staff five additional days, we would certainly focus on the health and safety, and again, the SEDNET training. But we would be able to go more in-depth because we would have more time. We would have five additional days with our parent professionals. And again, that is a key group of individuals that impact our students. We want them to be able to take Microsoft Teams training because we know that is the online platform that we are issuing out as the district. And some, in some places, they will be using Google Classroom. And if it's Google Classroom that they've chosen as a school, we will certainly provide the Google Classroom training for our parent professionals. We want them to be able to feel comfortable in going into Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom. And so, there's, there's nine hours of the moodles that they would be able to take if we had option two, which is the two-week plan, five additional days for our non-instructional staff. As well, we would certainly, our, our parent professionals are vital when it comes to MTSS during the school day. We would certainly be giving them training on additional procedures when it comes to health and safety, on what it looks like when you're working with your MTSS groups, whether it's an individual student or small groups of students, because we know that's gonna look very differently than what it's looked like in the past. There's additional training that could happen in those five additional days for assessment training that parent professionals oftentimes help proctor with. And so, that, again, bringing in that health and safety piece and that comfort level to a group of vital employees that we have on the school level that are in front of our students and our teachers every single day. The third column goes over the three-week plan, which for non-instructional, the majority of non-instructional staff, gives us 10 additional days. Again, we would have just that comfort level of being able to take the Microsoft Teams training, which, again, we, Mr. Whitehouse and I, as well as the principals, have had many of our parent professionals reach out to us and ask us questions about it already. They're already wanting to learn. That is one group that we do have in our school system. Our parent professionals are always asking, what trainings can I take? What trainings do you have available? This option gives us those days to be able to do that. So, we certainly will have a main focus on, on the digital, online, Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom that they'll be using at their school level, so that they will feel comfortable in using that. And there may be times where the parent professional is covering for a teacher that's teaching online with Microsoft Teams. Again, this provides us the time to give them so that they have that comfort level in being able to do that and the skill set to do that. Certainly, it gives them time additionally at the school level with the principal and with the assistant principals to go through collaborative planning because many of our parent professionals do participate in that collaborative planning piece with their teachers and with their coaches and administrators. Again, and then they would also go through the structuring and online learning schedule of just what that looks like during a day if they're asked to go in and sit in to, in a teacher's class that is teaching the MCPS online, what that looks like. So, we need to spend lots of time giving training to our parent professionals and our non-instructional staff that support our schools with that structure. In addition, we have our support staff that support our schools, that are in our schools, from our cafeteria workers. The additional time before students would come would give Ms. Johnson, with her cafeteria managers, time to do food safety training, additional point-of-sales training, meal delivery, curbside training that we will continue to have going on, employee wellness and safety training. So, that gives them more time to cover more in-depth and, again, make that group of individuals feel comfortable and confident in all of their duties. Transportation with Ms. Becky Roer's department. It gives them additional time before students come on campus for bus routing and ensuring their proper bus cleaning procedures, which, of course, you heard about in-depth earlier.
I have a couple of questions. You're not gonna get away that easy.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, when I look at the three plans and I look at the current plan of opening school, August 10th, there is such a lack of preparation time that I feel it's really important to somehow get this chart out to the community so they can see
Work needs to be done.
and answer for themselves why we need this time, why we would be remiss by not providing this time.
Well, and I think it's, you know, when I look at this, I'm thinking, you know, there's always something good that comes out of bad things. And the fact that we're able to train and take that extra time, I'd like to be, see us do a little more every year.
Which, if we had been able to do that, or, you know, through the years, we'd probably be a higher-performing district. But that being said, just the conversations that we've had today so far illustrate how critical it is to set up our communication frameworks. We have to do everything we can to reduce the disruptions. And so, to me, this is definitely on the right track. I like the fact of bringing employees in early and getting, front-loading all that critical training. We know kids have been out. We know about the cases of abuse and neglect. All of these, for teachers, they get the master in-service points, so it gets that training out of the way for them. It is truly preparing them for, for what's to come. And, and the bus drivers, one thing that I don't see on the second page for support staff, it talks, speaks to bus routing and bus cleaning procedures. There's also the, setting the expectations for kids when they get on the bus that, that wearing a mask is required and, and how our bus driver's going to be trying to deal with, you know, the kids that are questioning that. It's a huge responsibility, so that's in my mind. The two things that I didn't see that I wanted to ask about, if our contracted employees, and I'm thinking about our speech-language pathologists, our occupational therapists, that are not, that are contracted outside of the school system, but are very much face-to-face with kids, very much put in harm's way with kids that have behavior issues, that spit. And I'm just gonna say it, some of them have projectile vomiting on demand as a behavior. So, those folks need the training and support as well. And, and so, they need to be part of this. And, and so, where would that funding come from?
So, I can tell you that, and one thing that I did not mention, another group of important employees that I didn't mention. So, first, to address your question, yes, Dr. Alves is working very closely. She oversees that contracted group of employees, as you know. And so, Dr. Alves has been working very closely with Mr. Whitehouse and I to plan exactly what professional development needs to happen. Because you're right, the, the group of contracted employees that you mentioned, speech, language, OTPT, all come into our schools on a daily basis. And so, she's working with that group to ensure that they have the proper training as well. And again, the, each of those options provides additional time to be able to do that. She's working with their supervisors in order to figure out exactly what that looks like in order to extend their contract. So, that's certainly something that's, that's in the process of being worked on.
Okay, that's.
She has the trainings to give them. It's certainly, they're working through the process of, of them getting, being able to get paid and what timeframe that looks like. One group that we have problem solved through, that we are bringing back early, we've worked with Ms. Beck, and I have worked with Pam Eubanks, who heads up our Marion after-school program, formerly known as Extended Day. You heard Mr. Lebert mention that that's an extension of the school day. It certainly is, but we certainly need to have time. The, the managers come back a day or two early, but typically, the employees start the first day of school. We have to get them back before students are back because we have to be able to ensure that we have given them the proper health and safety procedures and new protocols to, again, to give them a comfort level and all, to keep all of them and our students safe. So, we have done that. We are working with them, and they will be, depending on which plan is chosen, they will determine which day it is, because we certainly want it to be closer to when the students are starting. But they will come back at least a day, if not two, and they'll be paid stipends in order to receive that training.
Would you speak a little more on the parent-professional learning?
So, we have, Mr. Whitehouse and I, as well as many of you, have taken lots of just parent feedback on asking for parent education, on being able to look at whatever, whatever online learning platform we're using, whether it's Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom, and just being able to, even if it's a simple video clip of what that looks like in order to log on, what, where am I, what, am I using the student number? Am I, you know, what, what am I using for this? How do I get to my students' teachers? What do I click on? So, basically, just a step-by-step. So, we're working with Kevin Christian's department to certainly produce some of those parent video clips so that there's some parent education out there. Not only that, but they've asked about health and safety and just getting that information out there to them. So, having the additional time will, will give us the ability to be able to create more of those to have out for our parents.
So, it sounds like you're gonna be creating like a bunch of PSAs for parents to, to be able to go on and try to walk them through without having to call a help desk or anything like that. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we have in our mind, and we've talked to many of our principals about it as well. And some of the principals have been working with their teachers, even on, on individual school sites of what that may look like, that they can put on their web pages. But that's certainly in process, in, in progress, and we're, we're working towards that. But that is what I have in my mind, so that a parent could easily click on that from their home and, and see a little clip of information.
I, I, I actually like that. I'll tell you why. I'm not a mechanically-inclined person. And, but since Google has been around and YouTube, I've learned how to do a whole lot of things by looking at those PSAs, even fix my car and stuff. So, it's, it's amazing what we can do if we just have somebody walking us through it, so, makes sense.
Well, we are able to write the scripts, and, and Mr. Christian works his magic with the video production piece.
Chair Cummings, I feel like I'm taking over from you with the question department. But I do have a, a lot of just things that I'm wondering about. And if we have the, the three-week, if we decide on the three-week option, will parents be able to have the ability to connect with the, whoever's gonna be the teacher of record through the online platforms that we're going to be using to begin to make those connections, get to know each other? It could be something really basic, like the public service announcements, keep videos of hand washing, whatever it is. But, but to begin to make it familiar, you know, for families. Oh, this is where I go. This is what I click. This is what I get. You know, at least, at least the basics in the beginning.
So, again, having more time before students come back gives us the, more of the capability to be able to do that. I know Mr. Whitehouse and I looked at the survey that we pulled. As you know, the, the survey deadline was last night for parents to be able to make a choice. So, we do have the data on, on what that looks like. We're, so, so, schools are able to start scheduling, right? And so, once they've scheduled a student with a teacher, then they are able to certainly make, start making some of those connections. As you know, we typically, in Marion County, have an elementary school, we call it Meet the Teacher Day. Parents come the Friday or Thursday before school starts on Monday, or teacher orientation in, in secondary is what it's called. So, certainly, we know that that's gonna be a different way of work, right? We're not gonna be able to open up our entire campus wide-open with lots of parents coming on. So, we've been working with our principals, and, and the teachers have been working already, even though I know they're on a contract, but they, our teachers are amazing. And so, they're already trying to brainstorm and think through what that can look like for each school. Again, a lot of them are doing the video clips that they can put on their teacher webpage and website so that when students, when parents are able to look in Skyward Portal and see who their teacher is, then they can log into that certain website and, and meet the teacher through the video clip. So, again, it's a, just a different way of work, but we're all working together to make it happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kyron.
I'm sure I'll think of something else. I'll call you.
You have my number.
So, Mr. View, is that pretty much the whole presentation?
Yes, sir.
Before we do discussion, I'm sorry. Before we have discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and open up, get the public comment now, so that we can ask them. So, you may.
Lauren Hill.
How many do we have?
Four, three or four.
Can we give them the five minutes since they've been waiting so long? Okay.
Can, is Nicole here to do the clock?
I can do this in three minutes. I plan for three minutes, so.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Lauren Hill. I live at 3939 Southeast 14th Place. It's H-I-L-L. I wanna refer to the July 7th Emergency School Board Meeting when my board member said, "I went to the Health Department website and more children have died from seasonal influenza than have died from COVID in a four-month period." In COVID's four-month period and in the influenza season four-month period, from October to February, 10 children died from influenza and three have died from COVID under 18. First, the board member repeated a four-month period three times, from October to February, which is actually a five-month period. Second, the information cannot be confirmed because the first case of COVID in the U.S. was reported on January 20th. So, how can this be an accurate statement? Aware of this discrepancy, I confronted the board member and asked for the source of this information. The board member was still trying to contest that they did not compare COVID to cooties and that I misunderstood. I have the transcript from the board meeting on the 7th where the board member says, "I mean, my goodness, our elementary schools can't even control head lice that we can't, that we can see, so we expect them to keep children away from a cootie that they cannot see." Also, in that same conversation, "But I don't think there's any research out there that will tell you that in a room like this with 20 children in there for five hours a day, that a mask or social distancing is going to protect them from an unseen cootie."
I stand by that.
When she could not provide the source, she said, "What?", question mark. "I circled the date for you. You nitwet." After I asked the member again, the reply was, "LOL, you are a hoot and I am blocking your number." Uh, my First Amendment right is to allow me to hold the government accountable through expression. Uh, this right has been infringed by this board member. Um, Chapter two point zero zero of the School Board Governance, uh, Part One says, "Special committees may be appointed by the school board chairperson when deemed necessary." Might I suggest a validity committee for this board member? Uh, I will return to the next board meeting to see if that comes to fruition, but if not, then I understand. I can be the validity committee. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings. I have sent Kevin total research from, that I used. She's saying that I said that it was the same four months. When I said four months, I'm comparing, and it is four months, from the end of October until the end of February is four months. And she has harassed me. She's sent me emails calling me a liar. And there came a point where I just had all I was gonna take from this lady. She even has a fake email from me that she made up, that I don't know how long ago she made that up, because it came through, I don't know how old that is, but I couldn't even find it, something about Nancy, Stacy, so I don't know, some kind of email. I don't know when she made that up. Um, and she's Stephanie Hill. She announces herself here as Lauren Hill. I didn't know who she was. I actually wondered if she was some kind of, I didn't know if she was a teacher, a parent, or what she was. And after you've been called a liar through a couple of emails, yeah, you get pretty fed up with it. And, um, she, um, I sent Kevin the research because my research was four months from October to, end of February. And I even sent her the copies of it with the dates circled to help her. The other four months was from March until July, when COVID was in. I was saying, in a four-month period, this many died from this, and in a four-month period, this many died from this. And so, um, obviously, it couldn't be COVID from October to February, because we didn't have it. But we did have it from March until July. That was another four-month period that I was using. So I sent her the documentation and I even circled it for her. Here's the date of this report, end of June. The document showed under twenty years old, two students, two children, two people under twenty had died. Document, circled it for her. And then between then and the board meeting, a week or two later, like another person had died. So I said three. And I have sent, I just, I don't know what her problem is. I sent it to Kevin for him to have it. If anybody wants it, he has it. And so, um, thank goodness, I took screenshots of it when I found it. When I first, when I first wrote about it, I took screenshots, I could go back and review it. And, um, so she, I won't be answering her emails. If she wants to harass me, I will not even open her emails, because I will not be called a liar. I will not be these fake emails addresses that she's made it with my name in it, that, I don't know when she did that. Um, so no, I will not be, I had learned a long time ago, you cannot reason with the unreasonable, and I don't plan on talking to her again about this. Kevin has all the research that he needs, and that's the way that goes.
Thank you, Ms. Lucy. Thanks.
Melanie Slaughter.
Call the afternoon right now.
Good afternoon. Um, Melanie Slaughter, four, five, two, five, Southeast Twelfth Avenue. Um, I have been in communication with a lot of parents. I think Plan A is probably by far the best plan, uh, in front of the board, and I would ask the board to con- seriously consider Plan A. Um, I'm mainly here because the parents don't really understand the, um, the virtual option through the school. They don't understand that the kids are gonna be in a class and they're gonna get a break. And then they're gonna go to the next class on, under the bell schedule, and they're gonna get a break. They don't understand that. They think their kid is gonna sit there with no lunch for an entire six hours and go to school. I mean, I'm just telling you, it's all over Facebook. It's, uh, they've called me about it. So somebody needs to explain to them, or do a video, or do something, so they feel comfortable with the virtual option, because a lot of them, I think, would enroll in the virtual option if they knew that there would be breaks, there would be lunch, there would be things like that. Um, I would ask the board to also consider potentially not tracking sports with the calendar, because I think it's going to be a lot for teachers to come back on the twenty-fourth, even with three weeks of professional development, and deal with everything all at once. Um, I think Alachua County, who's also starting on the twenty-fourth, they're letting their sports team start next week, which I know we're not doing that, which is fine. But we may wanna consider having games prior to the start date. Why? Because we can limit students coming on campus before school starts. And I don't know what we're gonna be able to allow, but if you have a game on the sep-, on the week of the seventeenth or the week of the tenth, or let's just say the week of the seventeenth, the week before school starts. We can limit it to parents, we can limit it to, um, you know, not students coming on campus yet because school has not officially started. And it lets us get some kinks out, because I don't know what the safety protocols are gonna be from the Florida Athletic Association, but we're gonna have a hard time keeping kids off campus once school starts. So if there's gonna be any issues, if there's gonna be any problems, let's deal with it before school starts. Let's get safety protocols in place with sports before school starts. Because then that way, we can tell them, okay, we let parents come on, we didn't have any issues, or we spaced everybody out, or we let this number of people in. You're also gonna have to consider, are you gonna let them have concessions on all these games? Are you gonna let them cook food and hand food out to people and let people eat in the stands? Those things are gonna have to be thought about, and those things are gonna have to be addressed. Now, the field house has never been cleaner. That's the only good thing about cooking. That place is spotless. It's never been cleaner, I've never seen it cleaner in my life. So that's the good thing. That's the upside. But, um, I think that we need to try to do sports, like volleyball, football especially, which are the two most concerned when I watch the five-hour meeting about having sports start. Um, so that we have the protocols in place before kids come on. Because the volleyball gym at Vanguard at least is packed for every volleyball game. Um, the, the students do not know how to social distance in a football game. They're all jammed in one little section of the stands. Even if the whole place is empty, they're all jammed in one little area. And so I think that if we do that, we have an opportunity, I think, hopefully, to get those issues in place before school starts. We don't put everything on the teachers on the twenty-fourth. But I, and, oh, and the, one last thing, I'm sorry, I know I haven't been. The last thing is, if the teachers could, if the, we could find out who the teachers are before the day before school starts, or the Friday before school starts, I think it would, it would alleviate a lot of tension with parents. And they have a schedule, and maybe they can't call the teacher, but if they could email the teacher if they had a question or something like that, I think that would alleviate a lot of stress with the start of school on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna wait in my area.
Sounds like you were saying something like online orientation.
Well, if, if we could do a, if we could do a Zoom or a Microsoft, it would probably help. Uh, I would, I would like to do something for my kids at Vanguard, um, in the field house, where I could Zoom them all in, maybe ten at a time, and let them watch a video or have something about, this is what Microsoft Teams is, if you're doing it. These are things like that, because a lot of parents don't have any kind of technology knowledge at all. And so if I could make the parents especially, I can get them to the field house, especially while I'm waiting for Coach Farmer for two hours, when practice is supposed to end at seven, it doesn't get done until nine. Um, you know what I mean? So, you know, if.
We didn't hear that.
I know, I know.
You didn't, you didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
I know you did not say that, Ms. Farmer.
So.
I know you didn't say that.
So, you know what I mean? But I mean.
You just throw that coach under the bus.
Yeah, I know. But the, 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 I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, there's plenty of time to work with parents. I talk to them all the time. There's plenty of time to work with parents, there's plenty of time to do things that we need to do to get everybody up, up, people don't know what Microsoft Teams is.
Yeah.
I mean, they really don't. So I'm just, I would just like to have the opportunity to, to get with some parents and try to do some training and stuff like that in the three weeks that the professional development is happening. So if they do elect to do that option, um, that they can, they can do that.
Thank you.
And we can do training at the school, I think.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Helen Hamel.
Tell Coach Farmer, hey.
I will. Good afternoon. Helen Hamel, three, four, four, five, Southeast Highway forty-two, Summerfield, last name H.A.M.E.L. I just want to say thank you. You guys have put so much effort into trying to make this incredibly complicated system make a little bit more sense. But I did wanna just bring up a couple things that I still have questions on. I'm a, I'm not in the classroom, I'm a magnet coordinator. So I see things a little bit differently. I see lots of kids over my day. How are we gonna look at communication of exposure? I know we run into HEPA issues, but we have got to be proactive in protecting our students and our staff. So if there's been an exposure, how are they going to know their level of exposure? How are they going to know beyond the Health Department calling them days later that they need to be safe? Because they're taking whatever they do at hu-, at school, home. So what's gonna happen there? Leave time. I know we had a great discussion about that. I was actually really excited to hear that discussion on leave time. But when we're looking at new teachers, they come in, they get four days. You get ten days of leave from the CARES Act, or rather, from the expanded FMLA. The problem there is that's one ten-day window, one. If you're dealing with multiple exposures, or you have family members who may have exposures, that ten days goes by really fast. Four, four days are front-loaded at the beginning of the year for sick time for a new teacher. That's not a lot of give and take. These are new teachers. A lot of them are young teachers. They don't have time accrued. I'm looking at myself, I've been teaching for eight years. I could handle a fourteen-day quarantine with my sick leave, but I'm lucky enough and blessed enough that I haven't had to use my sick leave that much. I've been relatively healthy. What are we gonna do with our teachers who are at the most risk? When they have to quarantine, or when they have to take leave, or when one of their family members has to be quarantined and now they need to stay home? What's gonna happen there? We had a discussion earlier on, uh, protective equipment. And masks and shields we have allocated. But a very good point was made, they're not indefinite. So what's gonna happen when that runs out? Are we going to ask a teacher to go on Amazon and pay twenty-five dollars for a face shield that may or may not get here in time? Or can we provide an avenue for them to purchase through us? For them to reach it through us at maybe a reduced cost when bought in bulk? Maybe they can do masks the same way? Prioritized testing is the final thing I wanna touch on. We talked about having nurses at the school. I know, we do not have nurses at every single school. I understand that. But if I call down to the Health Department and get prioritized testing, they're gonna send it to the state. We're looking at minimum three days for testing. If we've not addressed my sick leave, that's three days on me, because of an exposure. I am one of the first people to tell you, we need to see our kids. We need to be with our kids. I fielded so many calls at the end of last year, of parents who were just frustrated. They're not teachers. There's a reason they're not teachers, and that's okay. That's what we have teachers for. That's what we're trained for. That's why we go to school, is to teach children. However, we need to watch with that prioritized testing that it is in existence. Can I maybe go to a school with a nurse on site? I'm an adult, I can sign the waiver, but I'm at the south end of the county. If I'm trying to get up here to the Health Department, that takes time. That takes effort, and that's more time taking out of my leave. So those are just some questions that keep popping up in my head. I know you guys are working towards it, and I really do appreciate that. But I think a lot of teachers would be a lot more comfortable if we just had some answers for those big issues, because that's what I'm hearing pop up from teachers. We want to be back in front of our kids. We want to teach the learners of Marion County. That's why we keep our jobs. We just want to be safe. And we want to ensure that when we go home, our families are safe. So thank you so much for your work. Thank you, thank you. But just keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna say something to her, Reverend Cummings, once he's here.
Sure.
Helen, I've, we, I came on the board when you came to work eight years ago. I wanna compliment you. There's, there's people that do their job, and there's people that, like, do their job and other people's jobs and everything. And Helen, you're great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark Avery.
It's not such a business to us. Good afternoon. My name's Mark Avery, A.V.E.R.Y. I reside at three Diamond Ridge Way, Ocala, Florida, three, four, four, seven, two. And I am the president of the Marion Education Association. I wanna start off, unfortunately, with a negative kind of thing, and then I will talk about lots of positive things. So at the last mea-, the meeting last week, one of the board members said, "Well, teachers have been off since May," or since March, I'm sorry. And I've had teachers contact me that they were very, very upset with that comment, because teachers were not on vacation since March, I think is what the statement was. Um, during the distance learning that we did in the spring, teachers actually worked a whole lot more than they had on a normal daily basis, because they had a different schedule. And parents and students didn't understand that the day ended at two, or the day ended at three. And people were calling at five o'clock, and eight o'clock, and ten o'clock. And parents were emailing. Um, matter of fact, I had a teacher who, um, responded to an email late at night and didn't use their best judgment. Because they were still being a teacher for unfor-, unfortunately. Um, so I, I just want everybody to be aware that the teachers did work very, very hard in the spring. And that's even one of the things we talked about during, um, the reopening committees, that with distance learning, we need to put parameters in there, because, just because my kid's not physically in school doesn't mean that teacher has to work twelve hours a day and answer emails and phone calls. And, and that was one of the concerns we had in the spring. On the positive side, I appreciate you meeting more. I appreciate the fact that we're trying to work together. A- as you mentioned about the Superintendent Association and the School Board Association pushing for standardized testing, we're on the same page. Our side has been, um, pushing for the same thing. Notice, we need to stop that. I believe that you mentioned, and I'm not trying to, I apologize, Ms. McCall, and we talked about students missing days. And I believe there's gonna be a huge challenge for us as educators, because a student has a symptom and they're not there for ten days. And then they, two weeks later, they have a symptom and they miss another ten days. And I think that there's gonna be a real struggle to try to keep them on track, regardless of what we do this year. So that, I think that's one of the realities we have, even if we're, everybody is coming to brick and mortar. Uh, we have tried to look at the leave issue at the state side. This week, we sent a letter to the CFO of the State of Florida to ask them to adjust the workman's comp for our employees. So in March, or in, in, back in March, they adjusted workman's comp for frontline workers. But education employees are not frontline workers, according to the state. And we're gonna be the, the new frontline, with the exception of medical people. So I thi-, we're, we're trying to push from that angle too. So we're working together with you on this. And, and I, I want the district to keep working with the unions, because as you said, uh, Mr. Cummings, and we like to use the, the term that we're building the airplane while we're flying it. Just as we come up with one, yeah, that sounds scary, yes. Just as we come up with one answer, we have five new questions. And, and we continue to have these questions. Teachers wanna work, they wanna be safe. Um, I, I would say that the biggest concern I've had, um, yes, the last couple days was about the, the mask policy, because there was, um, a line on the website that said, "If you can social distance, then you don't have to use the mask." However, in our resolution, it says, under exceptions, follow the CDC guidelines. When you go to the CDC guidelines, they say, "If you go in public, you should wear a mask." These are public schools. So it kind of, our own policy kind of contradicts itself. And I don't wanna see our teachers or our employees, or our students arguing about, "Well, we're, we're five feet apart, or we're six feet apart, so I don't have to wear this, or you don't have to wear that." Because the reality is, we have people in our community that don't want to wear masks or shields. And we've had businesses and society say that you have to at certain places. So I, I just want us to consider that as we move forward, and I, and. So I, I just want us to consider that as we move forward and I, and look forward to keep working with the district on these issues as we progress through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayer.
That's it.
Any other comment? You got one more?
Oh, oh, I, I thought he spoke earlier. I thought that was it.
I've been watching, I guess we have many people that are watching online around what's going on today. And my phone has been buzzing and vibrating and scaring me. I want to talk on two things if I can. First, I want to say from the perspective of the community that I deal with, Plan A is what we're looking at. Because of the time it allows each one of our areas of need to get the training that they really want. And one of the things I, I've been sharing and I've been learning that this is not the normal situation. This is not a normal cold or flu or, or anything. This is COVID-19 that the world doesn't have a grasp of. And so I think the more time that we utilize to prepare our community, not just the faculty, staff and students, but the parents. Because a lot of parents that are very concerned and very nervous about going to back to school. We have parents that want to send their kids back to school, but they don't know if they should send their kids back to school. And then there's, there's this new trend that, that's been talked about on TV all morning about parents opting personal tutors and homeschooling kids. And that's becoming a big thing. I, I'm a Good Morning American person, so that was all that was on Good Morning America this morning. I don't want our public school systems to lose out of whatever they're supposed to receive because parents are not informed or concerned and in fear opting to do other things and taking them to homeschool. That's the first thing and the major thing that I want to share with you. So Plan A is one that I can support 100%. Then secondly, those of you that were part, were, have been here all day, the youth council of the NAACP had spoke this morning, Ms. Francesca, I think. I'm so proud of her. And the reason why the young people didn't stay is because she's actually doing a dual program with Princeton University. And she starts every morning at 7:30 and, and talking to her, she's there most of the day. But I want to reiterate what their sentiments are. I even wrote a little letter because I wanted to make sure I stated my time. And I'd just simply say greetings to Reverend Eric Cummings and the entire school board of Marion County. First, I want to say thank you for all the great work you're doing. And I appreciate you allowing the community to have such input in what's going on. But I write to you today as a parent, a pastor and a president. The reason that I felt the need to state my positions is that I've thought long and hard from each one of those positions in regards to what I would like to request this board to, of this board today. I am formally requesting that you, the Marion County School Board, would reconvene the Code of Conduct Committee with the purpose of reviewing the code of student conduct due to the current climate when it comes to the need of peaceful protest. And especially knowing that one of the ways protests peacefully is to sit or kneel. Now, from a church standpoint, kneeling is something more powerful than it is negative. We pray while we're kneeling. We, we protest while we're kneeling. It's a way we express how we feel and what we believe. During the Pledge of Allegiance or the National Anthem, it is imperative that this issue be discussed prior to the start of the school year, which that longer time of preparation, I think, will allow us that opportunity. As our faculty, staff and students return to a learning environment, students will be returning to school having in horror watched the televised killings of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Richard Brooks. Many of them may have also witnessed some of their fellow students peacefully protesting during graduation ceremonies in which some were berated by the former superintendent. I'm so glad I can say former superintendent. We must be mindful that we are bringing up our future leaders. We want these students to feel that their voices can be heard, that their cultures will be respected and that their views matter. So in closing, I'm again rest request that just as we are preparing for the safe return of our educational community, that we also prepare and train for the racial and political sensitivity that our young minds will return with this academic year. And with the knowledge that all of these, these, these young and impressionable minds present, they should never feel that expressing themselves peacefully might produce adverse or demoralizing retribution. Thank you for your time. Bishop Scott.
Thank you, Bishop Scott. Anybody else? We're going to entertain discussion about these options that we've heard. I'm just going to go around starting. Let me start with Superintendent Gullett. Is there anything additional that you need to add to what we've heard about these options?
Senator Chairman Cummings, members of the board, I would just reiterate a thank you to the team for presenting. Our mission is to provide information, is to inform and educate, provide the resources our staff and community needs. And I thank everyone for this, their patience and their input during this very uncertain time.
Thank you. I want to thank you and your team, Deputy, all of Mr. Whitehouse, our area directors, Mr. Ares J.C., the group that was here this morning for the input that they did give us. I think the things that you guys have given us, have shared with us is going to help us make a great decision, a good decision, a safe decision, so. Board, let's talk. Ms. McCall?
Would you like me to start? So first of all, a couple of things I was, I want to thank staff because they, you all have done a great job. I think if the community was uncomfortable, I think their comfort level went up today. And that's thank you to, to everybody from Mr. Cook and Mr. Lepert to Ms. Rohr with Transportation, to those in the room that helped that. I was so pleased, first of all, to hear about our air conditioners. I yesterday was on a webinar. I sit for the Florida School Board Association as a board of directors member of the Florida Schools Music Association. And they had a webinar, there's been this huge study done on the performing arts and James Weaver, who is actually the director of Performing Arts in Sports, they put those two together, which I kind of like, for the National Federation of State High School Associations. And this was a fascinating, fascinating study on music, on choral singing and instruments. And there is hope that we may be able to have that even during COVID. But one of the things that I sent Mr. Lepert was the air quality and the air change rates that they talked about, which I knew nothing about. It was fascinating. But the fact that we have the fresh air makes such a huge difference because that was a really big part in music, instruments and vocal, but I think even in our classrooms. So I, I was thrilled to hear that. But I will send this, so you all can watch it on YouTube because it, it's not only fascinating from a music standpoint, but when you understand the airflow and you see how they've put masks on these vocalists, they sing a high note and you see all the aerosols, they documented it and you put a mask on and they almost disappear. So fascinating. But I, I really think Plan A is the best. I think because of the unprecedented times that we are in, having those three weeks, having those three weeks to not only train our teachers on online, on distance learning, because we all know this could happen again. And for them to be truly prepared is, is what I really, really want them to do, plus all the safety precautions we need. So Plan A, where we can get those people in. I know that that's, there could be a childcare issue, but our parents have had a childcare issue. So expanding that a couple of more weeks, I, I know will be difficult. But I think for our students, for our staff, for our community, that Plan A is definitely what I would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCall. Stacy?
I'm for A. I believe that it's, makes the most sense. It gives teachers plenty of time to get trained. And as we've seen, there's so much, we, we don't even know what we don't know. And I think we'll know what we don't know more when it gets here to plan because I'm sure Dr. Gullett will think of some more stuff tomorrow that we didn't know today that we know today that we'll know tomorrow. So I think opening all at one time with everybody at one time, that's what the majority of the teachers wanted per their surveys. And parents didn't want to do online. And I think it kind of meets everybody where they need to be. And I'm fine with the, with the 170 days. I think that's what it is. Am I correct? And I'm not, it's not days that you're in school, it's the quality when you're in school. So we could go on days and we, you know, for parents who just can't do the, the teachers are struggling to get the parents to cooperate, but parents just can't do it for lots of different reasons. Their children really are not in school. They're playing in school. So I want to get them in real school for the parents who can't do the online, no matter how hard the teachers want them to. I believe in, I would, so I would rather the children attend 170 days of school and the ones that did not want to social, did not want to online learn, not have to play school for two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. King?
I also support Plan A at this point, but I did hear a flag and it was, I guess if we went with Plan C, we were not prepared for online classes like all our students because we haven't even received equipment that was dispersed last year. In a perfect world, I would like to see our schools open and stay open. Unfortunately, I understand that COVID-19 is out there and in a drop of a hat, we could have teachers and students out of the classroom. So there has to be a Plan B for when that does happen. And I hope that Plan B is that our students and teachers go home for 10 to 14 days and not getting any sort of education. So I do, would like to know what Plan B is and are we going to be prepared on August 24th? And God forbid, COVID-19, you know, make our students or our teachers ill. And so I, I would like to know a little bit more about that moving forward too. And that's what I have.
And Ms. King, Ms. King brought up something that's been on minds to, my mind too is, I think I asked Mr. Villanillo or someone, I asked someone this week. How soon, if we had to go into a second interruption, how fast can we turn the switch and go from brick and mortar right back to MCPS online? Because at that point, everybody would have to be on MCPS online, not distance learning, but MCPS online. How soon could we flip the switch? I know when we, in March, I think it was a week or so, almost two, three weeks before we actually had a process and got those things out. If we have a second interruption, as Ms. King is saying, we need to be able to do that with not weeks this time. It needs to be days.
It really needs to be instant. It should be very fluid. Because we don't have any more time to waste on our children's education.
So is there, have you guys already worked it out? What, what is, give us, give us something to us? Because, because the community needs to know this and that's what, we're trying to give them the assurances that they, the questions to ask.
As a reminder, we had, we had our subcommittees and this was one of our subcommittees. So we brought in a diverse group of, of stakeholders to talk about just this. And Melissa, and she was the chair of that. So she's got that information.
So we, that is again, the beauty of having the additional time upfront before students come on campus and before school actually starts. Because our teachers and our parent professionals and our administrators would be completely trained in the Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom online learning platform before students come on campus. So that when there is a second interruption and a school or schools begin to shut down, the teachers are instantly ready to go. The students will be trained as soon as they get there again, working through video clips that we can start sending out with having the additional time so that they are slightly familiar with the new platform. And then of course, the first couple of days of school, the teachers would definitely be going through that online learning platform with our students, even the ones that are not, that have not chosen MCPS online, knowing that all of our students at some point will most likely be needing to know how to use Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom during the year. In addition, we do have the amount of devices that we need. Yes, there were some Chromebooks that were not returned from our students that are still out there. But I will tell you that we've also heard from parents, as principals have been calling their parents that still have the Chromebooks, they knew that they would need them because they were choosing the MCPS online option. And with just a few short weeks before school begins, they, they were asking just if they could keep them because of course, we are going to have to do another distribution car line where the administrators and staff go outside and issue out the Chromebooks when we would need those. So it makes sense for some of those parents that knew they were choosing that option to go ahead and, and keep that device checked out. So we have the devices and we have those ready to go. We have, as far as internet access, we know that we do have some students, of course, as we saw quarter four, that do have an internet access issue. We have 400 hotspots currently that we're able to check out. No, that's not enough. But the Second Interruption Committee did collect data on that. We order, we have ordered 6,500 additional hotspots from Sprint and some from T-Mobile. And so those are on order. We do not have those yet. So we know that, that, we would certainly have to come up with some alternative methods until those arrive. But we certainly have the devices. We'll have the online platform and the technology and instruction online ready to go in an instant and the devices would be out there instantly.
So if a teacher, again, I need clarification. So if a teacher is teaching her classroom and she, and say 10 of her students have been exposed and they're ill, what is the plan from today is Thursday and tomorrow is Friday and we know that the teacher and 10 students cannot enter the classroom? What is our plan for that?
So that teacher is, you're saying the teacher is still there teaching, not the teacher has been exposed, just some of the students?
No, say the teacher and 10 students. Say 10 students. But there's still five in the, you know, what is our plan of action? Because unfortunately, I mean, I can come up with all kinds of crazy scenarios.
I was going to say, there's lots of different scenarios. But if the teacher is, is exposed or, or has to be quarantined for any variety of those reasons and if they're able to teach, if they're able to, if they feel up to it, I guess is what I'm saying, but depending on their symptoms, if they're wanting to, then they, they would have an opportunity to go online with their students. And again, if the students are up to feeling okay and well enough to go online from home, they could certainly do that as well. So, so I mean, that is one of the beauties of it. Being able to have the training and being able to have that instantaneous access to the online platform. There's other scenarios. What if the teacher's there and a few students are out and the, and the majority of the students are still there? Of course, this teacher is continuing to teach the face-to-face traditional style of learning and those couple of students are certainly getting, you know, their access through having that online platform. The teacher's not being asked to teach in both methods, but they can certainly access all of the assignments in that one location platform.
It'd be like sending work home for a kid that has the flu or?
So they'd be able to access it because it would be all online, which is something that, again, it's a new way of work for us that, that makes it an easier access and, and more equitable for all of our students.
Okay, so that kid wouldn't just suddenly turn into an online student. They would be, in the scenario you're describing, the, the teacher again has 10 kids in the classroom and three are out. Then they would be getting their instruction and their assignments. They would be getting their assignments from that teacher via?
The platform.
The platform.
So, and I can tell you that, I mean, we would have the option too, that if a parent wanted to, let's say they're going to be out for a longer amount of time, depending on their situation. If they're going to be out for a longer amount of time and the parent wanted to, they could call the school and the school could enroll them into the MCPS online class of that grade level. Now, it would be a different teacher, but it would still be the same grade level and it would still be the same curriculum and it would still be a teacher from that school. So again, like Ms. King said, there's lots of different situations that could happen. But we certainly have brainstormed a lot of them, so.
I think they'll have it.
I, my thought is that we have, that we're prepared in advance, that we have the equipment they need, that our teachers have internet access at their home that they're going to need. Our students are going to have the internet access that they're going to need because?
So it's already in place? So, it's already in place.
And that our students have the computers thing.
That's what I'm trying to do is think ahead, like, I don't want July, or excuse me, August twenty-fifth to happen upon us and we're not prepared. Because we know this is coming. So, that's why I want us to be ahead of it and have that smooth transition, do all that, cause it's trying, it's challenging times.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Before you said, before you said. Cause you, you, you said something, um, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Thor, I'm coming to you, I just gotta get a couple, couple of questions. You said that, um, we know that the cutoff was last night for them to make a decision, what are those numbers looking like now?
We had twenty-eight thousand that responded, go ahead, Mr. Villanillo.
How many?
Somebody know the answer.
Get it from memory, we had approximately twenty-eight thousand that responded one way or the other. And we had, was it fourteen?
Fifty-eight percent to about forty-two percent, traditional versus.
Online.
MCPS online, but if you factor in the number of families that if you didn't respond, we put you into the traditional route. So, if you factor in the balance of our families, it comes to about seventy percent will be traditional and thirty percent would be MCPS.
Which is kind of what we thought.
Which is what we thought all along from the surveys.
Stay inconsistent.
So, let me ask another question. I guess you say they got it this morning, the middle didn't get it, let me get it now. If a kid starts out, um, MCPS online, this was a question that was asked to me. They start off the first nine weeks and then they say, okay, I'm coming back to school, they will not have the same online teacher, correct?
They will most likely not have the same online teacher. I will tell you that again, our teachers are amazing, um, our administrators, principals have already been working with, um, lots of their teachers have come, you know, Zoom. And, and been in contact with their, with their principals, trying to work through what MCPS online looks like on, especially, and I can speak for elementary, Mr. Whitehouse can speak for secondary. Um, in elementary, of course, that looks very different, um, whether you have a smaller school or a larger school. Sometimes it looks great because you're able to dedicate one grade level, one teacher per grade level to MCPS online. In other situations, um, they, the teachers have decided that they want to do, um, a departmentalized and team teaching. So, that one teacher, let's say in fifth grade is having the MCPS online students for, um, half the day, teaching ELA. And, uh, the face-to-face traditional students, the other half of the day, and so, they would have two teachers. So, in that scenario, if you bounced back and came back to traditional school, you could still be on that same team with the same two teachers. But in the majority of the situations, it would quite possibly be another teacher at that school.
How many kids do you need per grade level to be online to have a class, MCPS online? I mean, if you only got, I'm thinking elementary, if you, you got first grade, you only got at a certain school, there's only three kids that's MCPS online for first grade. How are you gonna, uh, do, do you need a quota, do, are they gonna revert back to FLVS, what, what's, what's gonna happen?
So, we definitely have to meet class size, um, for our students that are coming into our campuses, um, so, we certainly would not go over class size. So, depending on how many students we have in that grade level that are coming back for traditional, we continue to meet class size in the grade levels that are there. And in some situations, if we can't, if we don't have enough, uh, students choosing MCPS online in that particular grade level to dedicate the one teacher. Um, in some situations, we've combined and made like a fourth, fifth grade, which we've done traditionally over throughout the years and it's a four, five online teacher. So, they have maybe si- ten fourth graders and, and five fifth graders. Again, every school looks a little bit different because, um, we want to serve every school's unique community needs for that.
If I could jump in and just make a comment here, we're, we've got our back-to-school principal meeting on Monday. Today was big, we need to hear what the decision of the board is and then the next time, the next time we come back together, which is a workday, which is Monday. We're gonna start working through with our principals, all of these different scenarios. And our principals will hear from Mr. Leopard and they'll hear from Ms. Rohr and they'll hear from Mrs. Simmons. And we're gonna go over this and we're gonna give them a chance, this will be a Zoom meeting. We're gonna give them a chance to have Zoom breakout rooms where they can start processing the information that they're hearing. And collectively talk through, here's what we're thinking on our campus, what are you thinking on your campus? And we're gonna start to collect some best practices as we open. We will then bring our principals back together next Thursday afternoon, because if you remember that the, the teachers start on the third, the, the following week. So, after next week's board, uh, board meeting in the afternoon, we'll bring our principals back together through another Zoom meeting. So, they've had a week to process, we can see what their questions are and then we can update them with whatever new information comes from the board meeting next Thursday morning. We can present to them Thursday afternoon.
Thank you.
Quick question, when the teachers and employees all come back to the schools, are, how's that gonna work? Cause say a school has a hundred employees, are they all, they're, surely they're all not gonna meet in the same room, are they gonna Zoom or how would that work?
They will Zoom and that was part of what Mrs. Oliver was talking about, um, as far as are we allowing our teachers to telework? And that is a question that we still, that is still out there. So, the first week, when we come back on August third, the teachers knew, as they traditionally do, that they're, that they need to be prepared to spend all week there. The question then remains for this, i- if we choose option A, for example, what do we do the week two and week three? Is there an opportunity for our teachers to work hybrid or our employees to work hybrid? Or is there an expectation for week two and week three that they will all come in? That's an important question that we would need answered and provide clarification for our teachers.
And we'll get that next week.
So, will they're, when they go back to school campus, will they go directly to their rooms? And will the PD be on their computers in the room, is that what we're thinking?
Yes, we're gonna follow all CDC guidelines and, and again, that will, our teachers will be wearing masks. The recommendation from the Health Department of CDC is, is no group larger than fifty. So, it would be possible for a principal to rotate through department meetings, grade level meetings, have face-to-face meetings, provided they're following board resolutions. But in those situations, we could Zoom out and it, they could have a faculty meeting where the teachers are in the comforts of their classrooms, yes.
Alright, thank you. Yes, there are always four words that guide my thinking and guide my actions when it comes to this job. And it's what's best for kids. And that's why I'm supporting Plan A, there is no perfect plan. I will say I am concerned about so far, I think we need to problem solve how to continue to get some PD to teachers through the year. Because anyone that thinks that we're gonna solve this in three weeks and be good to go for the, for the whole year, not knowing what is gonna happen anytime. I, I am concerned about that and, and coming up with innovative ways to build in some ongoing PE, uh, PD, PE too. But I feel like Plan A, what's best for kids is having healthy adults in front of them that are enthusiastic and, and positive, except for Corona. And really ready to put their best foot forward. Uh, we can't ensure anyone's safety. But we can certainly mitigate all kinds of risks by being prepared and being proactive. And being as ready as we can possibly be and that's the beauty I see of Plan A. It gives us that gift, which really shouldn't be a gift, I mean, time to do something right. To me is just foundational, but, but we're getting that with Plan A, which is great. And it also gives teachers time to really focus on what do they need to do to take good care of themselves? You know, we have an employee assistance program for a reason, we have teledoc for a reason. Now is the time, adults, to get your health ducks in a row. Get those notes from your physician if you have chronic sinus infections like I do. If you have asthma like I do. So, that you're not one of those symptoms that ends up having to go home for something that is already a known issue. We know that type two diabetes is a huge health concern when it comes to being able to, uh, survive COVID-19. And again, our employee assistance program has those support groups, has that support. You know, I'm big on mammograms and so, please get your mammogram. If your cancer is diagnosed early, then maybe you won't need chemotherapy and then you become less of a, a risk to your, to yourself. So, this is a huge wake-up call. I feel like the, the staff in Marion County Public Schools has done an incredible job responding to the concerns of the community. I don't know of a district that has been so transparent, that has really just put it out there to the community to say, how can we help you? How can we support you, what are your concerns? Every comment, every piece of feedback is valued and appreciated and really needed at this point because we all have a responsibility in this. We have the collective responsibility, but we also have our individual responsibilities. And I always feel like when America's back is against the wall, there is no one stronger, no one tougher. And no one that wants to make things better and overcome adversity better than the United States of America. So, I am ready, I, I, for all those reasons, I do support Plan A, knowing that there is no perfect plan. But I think this is the, the best plan that, of the three that's been put forward, which all had merit. So, again, thank you for the level of quality that you're bringing to us and all of your information and all of your support and all of your transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Let me, for the record, let me restate these, these three plans, I, I just saw something, um, someone asked to please restate the three plans. You had three plans that was presented today, a Plan A, um, with three weeks of PD, there's no additional cost to either of any of these plans. Has a hundred and seventy-day calendar, all staff will report as scheduled on the third, on the third. And all students will begin, uh, classes August twenty-fourth, based on whatever, um, plan they chose, uh, option they chose. Plan B is two weeks of PD, one hundred and seventy-five day calendar, all staff report to, report date would be delayed by one week, which would call paychecks to be delayed. All students will begin classes August twenty-fourth. And then Plan C, which is two weeks of PD, no additional costs, one hundred and seventy-eight day calendar, all staff report as scheduled. All students begin August seventeenth through MCPS online. The, it, school ending date for Plan A is May twenty-seventh, for Plan B, June fourth, and for Plan C, May twenty-seventh. For the record, I, I too support Plan A, so we do have a consensus. Um, it is the most logical plan that I'm seeing. Um, we heard last week, uh, Dr. Gullett and her team came and presented and said to us, we're not ready, we need time. It, it behooves us to listen to the professional and say that if she's saying that they're not ready, to give them the things that they need and the resources that they need. I think Plan A supports our staff, not just our teachers, but all of our staff and it puts them in a good place. Like Ms. Thor said, it does no good to have someone standing in front of our kids if they're not properly prepared. This helps us to make sure that we're putting the best person in front of them and that person is prepared to educate our kids, whether it's in live. Or whether it's on stream or however we're gonna do it. But I think this plan, uh, helps us to, um, get off to a good year. As Ms. King said as well, my concern is that we be able to flip the switch real fast. Um, because it's not if it's going to happen, it's just when it's gonna happen. And I really believe that it's gonna happen. Um, just looking at the trends, looking at summer school, how, um, kids have been going home and staff. Let me say this, we keep saying kids are just going home, we've had staff that have went home over the summer. Um, I think I heard someone say today that twenty kids have already went home for summer school. Well, you, you multiply that times all the kids that we have in the district and then you add the staff to that, that's serious, that is serious. So, we have to be prepared. I was looking at the email, someone just sent me that, uh, I think at Oak Crest, they have a plan already that, um, if that kid goes home for fourteen days. They're, they're taking their Chromebook with them because it's a possibility that they may not come back. So, those are things that I, I like to hear, I like to see where there is a plan in place for us to be thinking proactively. And to, to know how we're gonna handle these situations, because the parents need to know how these things are gonna happen. The community needs to know how these things are gonna happen. And we as board members, and, and we need to know how it's gonna happen because it helps us as, as well. So, um, I did get something else too, um, I know we talked about earlier. Moving, uh, quarter three back for extracurricular activities. We talked about sports, what about band? Because I'm seeing something that.
Set ex-.
Band camps were, were just canceled.
It would include all extracurriculars.
I just got something saying that all band camps were canceled and they wanna know why the camps are canceled and we still playing sports. Y'all check into that for me, because that's, that's, um, a valid question. If you're gonna cancel one, cancel all of them, but if you're not gonna cancel them, that the kids continue to do what they're doing.
Well, it may have something to do, I know Mrs. Crowder was meeting today. But it may have something to do with aerosols from the instruments that has not completely been solved yet.
Okay.
So, it may have nothing to do with.
What, what?
Jody Phillips, it may have something to do with being able to get the masks that have the slits for the kids to be able to play their instruments. So, that, there's, there's prob, there may be more to that. Okay, so, because she saw the same study I did yesterday and she was meeting with her supervisors today. So, it, it could be something other than that.
Well, let's, let us know as soon as possible, cause you guys just got the email as well as I did and, um, we, we would need to be prepared.
It could be that though, cause of the, because there is, unless those kids are masked, the study yesterday showed that even six feet apart's not gonna work.
Right.
So, they're gonna have to take care of that before those kids can play instruments.
Ms. Thor.
Sure, I'd like to ask just a, a point of clarification, if we approve Plan A, does that, does that approve the calendar for Plan A? And are we able to do that at this meeting?
This is a board meeting, yeah, this is a board meeting, I think we can do it at this meeting. I did have a question about Plan A though.
We'd have to submit it to the department.
Is, is, is spring break flexible in Plan A?
Should we move it to the next week?
Yes, cause of those three days, I'm so glad you brought that up, cause I forgot to say that.
So, do we wanna move spring break to the weekend twenty-second?
Come on up, Mr. Harris, see, you thought you were gone.
He's our calendar guy.
That's my buddy there.
I know teachers and students would like that better.
Yeah, I'm glad the, that is the issue and that is the one concern, the flexibility that we have with Plan A is that obviously it's better academically to have that, you know, come back. Not have to come back after spring break for four days to end the, the nine weeks. Um, but again, that spring break has been published and so, people may have made plans, they have to adjust those plans and so, that would be the only concern.
We wouldn't have made plans.
People aren't making too many plans right now.
Okay.
We've already, I would try to keep it as close as we possibly can.
Right.
What we had.
You wanna leave it?
So, are we?
Something about the kids coming back though and taking exams, I think that's.
I know, cause that's really what that would be used for.
Well, well, what this, what this would be is, this is the end of the nine weeks, this is the third nine weeks, this is not a semester. So, they would have an end of the nine weeks, but they would still have to come back and finish up the semester after spring break.
I think after spring break, it's not as big a deal because it's not semester exams. I'm just putting that out there, it's different than if it was Christmas time.
That's true.
Yeah, or end of the year.
That's true, so just leave it since it's been published?
I would leave it alone.
But teachers are gonna move everything up to make it work for the kids anyway. They're gonna, you know.
What do y'all recommend? Let me hear what y'all, what do y'all suggest?
He wants to leave it the same.
Whitehouse didn't like that.
This is, this is, the, the, it's the board decision of what to do, that obviously the two things to weigh are what's academically best for kids. And that's different necessarily at kindergarten or at elementary than it is at secondary and different things like that. And so, you have to take all that into consideration, but also the fact that it has been, that's when spring break is and been published.
Nothing else we stuck with that was published?
Well, that's okay, let's just, let's, let's just leave it. If it was end of a semester, it would be one thing, but let's just leave it, it's the end of a.
Now, procedurally, and this is where I'm gonna need Attorney Green and Elena, can we, since we've already had an approved instructional calendar. Can we at this board meeting by vote, since it is a board meeting, vote to adopt this calendar? I mean, I don't know what publishing rules and all that kinda stuff is, so procedurally, can we do that?
Okay, so we'll have to take a formal vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear again, the, the formal vote that y'all will be taking, is this Plan A as presented to you?
And it's cal, and it's calendar.
Including the calendar.
Including instructional calendar.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so, and, okay, we're good.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve Plan A and its instructional calendar, amended instructional calendar. amended instructional calendar that's attached with it.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Ror.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose have the same sign. Okay, so it's Plan A. The other thing before we go, the issue was brought about this code of conduct issue.
I have to be somewhere at 1:00.
Okay, this is gonna be fast, but yeah.
I have to be there.
And the issue that was brought up by Ms. Francesca, it was free, free speech, expression, assembly, and it's, I think it's on page 11 of the Code of Conduct, and it says to act in a manner which preserves dignity, patriotic observances, including standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and National Anthem by following the guidelines established by the United States Congress, 36 U.S.C., 772, 4 U.S.C., 4, and the court is to Florida law, the right to not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and National Anthem can be exercised only upon written parental consent, and students invoking this right with parental consent will not be penalized. So we probably need to look at this, guys. It happened at graduation, and we need to have things in place where these kids are not gonna get punished for exercising their right. The way it's listed here is they could get some, am I saying it right, Mr. Viall? Could they, could there be some consequence?
Without, without a parental consent, which would be a note that the school would have on file, it would be considered a level-one violation.
Now, are we gonna ask every parent to do a note for high school kids that a parent may not know they're gonna do it? I mean, I think if we just let the, let the Code of Conduct Committee look at it, look at the language, and see what they can do.
I would, and I would like for them to talk to the young lady and maybe her team to bring them in, because I think, you know, she was very eloquent, and I respect her opinion. So let's sit down with them, with she and her team, and, and hammer this out, you know? And I, I think, I think that's very acceptable, because there may be some other things, you know, that we could do, so.
Thank you. Ms. Ror.
Ms. Francesca is requesting a dialogue, so.
Absolutely.
Ms. King.
I'll, I'll hear what the dialogue is.
And that's, that's what they're asking. That's what I heard.
I'm okay with hearing dialogue.
That's what I heard, just hear, I heard dialogue, and see how we
Doesn't say I'm ready to make a decision, or
That's what we heard. We asked, they asked, they asked that the Code of Conduct Committee look at the language to review it. They didn't ask that we change it, they said look at it, so.
Okay.
That's what they asked.
I'm just looking at this point.
And making sure, I mean, we, we know that there's gonna be people kneeling this year, we know that, and we know it happened at graduation, so. With that being said, any other, Attorney Green?
I do have
Because we were about to go.
I know. Um, we, I would like to seek a consensus for y'all. You've approved a bid on some PPE items, we're gonna need some more. I wanna do it as a consensus so that the bill can be placed on a future agenda, but I don't want the team to be put too far behind all the other districts in ordering additional PPE. So I think the cleanest thing to do is, if I could have a consensus from y'all, that they can go ahead and order additional PPE, and then that, to piggyback the other approved bid.
So my question is, does this come through the CARES budget?
I believe that this is under all of that for the PPE.
Okay, so it's not coming out of general operations? Okay, then I, then I would say yes.
All right.
Yep.
My one question, and I've been asked this several times, is when will educators know with, whether they'll be teaching in class or online? Because there seems to be a lot of questions surrounding that, too, how they'll be teaching. Do we know that answer yet?
So we've just gotten, obviously, the final survey data from yesterday. So this morning, we were meeting with our high school assistant principals, currently we're meeting with our middle school assistant principals to start reworking the master schedule. It takes time. We, we have master schedules built for every student with the expectation we were coming back traditionally, and so now they're having to rework and readjust. But we will certainly as, work through that process as quickly as we can. Our hope is that with a week of solid work on this, that we're able to get a pretty good semblance of what, what the teaching schedule will be for each of our teachers by the time they come back August 3rd. Can't guarantee you that we wouldn't have to make some shifts after that, because we'll still have parents that probably come in and say they want to change their mind, and we'll have to do some adjusting. But we are working right now, and we'll work diligently from now until the teachers return and try to get that in place for them.
Okay, so hopefully roughly around August 3rd, then they'll have some direction. Not, not that it's solid, but
Correct. We, we should have a fairly good handle on exactly what we're looking at for each teacher's schedule by August 3rd.
Question, question while you're there. What's the process that you guys are going to use to determine who, which teacher is going to be online instructor, or which teacher is going to be classroom instructor?
Sure, so what most of the principals have done now is they've, knowing that we're going to both models, they've reached out to their staff and asked what their interest level is, which is typically what we do anytime we're trying to schedule our school, and we know we're gonna be adding new courses, new programs, shifting the schedule around. We, we talk with our staff, what is your preference? And then we go from their preference to what's best for students. So making sure that we are providing high-quality instruction, that we're placing staff who are comfortable with that online environment, but also trying to be considerate of our staff needs, too. And, and so we try to look at all of those pieces together, making the appropriate staff decisions.
And the reason I ask that, if anybody heard the governor's conversation yesterday, he, he
That's the key to what you want.
Exactly. He, he basically said that we got to try to have some options for our staff, and, and we need to make sure that we're standing compliance, guys. So, thank you. One other thing we need to discuss real quickly, at some point, board members, we're gonna have to look at the process for Board Attorney. Ms. Green has been serving us extremely well, and she has become my new best friend. Because I told her I didn't wanna go to jail, I'm not going to jail, so. So, but we need to definitely get that process rolling as soon as possible. We trying to run her away, you know, she's interested.
May I ask just that Terry send out the job description to everybody, and that we look at a timeline? We begin to put a timeline together?
We have to post it?
We'll have to get it posted and all of that.
And when you look at, how did they do it when they chose the last one?
Well, she should have all of that.
She should have all of it.
She should have all of that.
She has the documentation, I believe, that will show how, like, to different associations and different areas that we
We, she has all of that.
She does have all of that.
She should have all that, probably the timeline that we used, and the interview process, and stuff like that, which worked out well.
It worked out very well.
Our last attorney was great, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that we got that on our radar, and that's, that is coming up. Not that you've done anything wrong, Ms. Green. You haven't done anything wrong.
You have to be for a, like, you know, one night amount of time.
We have to set the house in order, the house has to be set in order.
Yeah, after, after this, she may not ever come back to her own position again.
There being no other discussion?
I do have a couple things.
Oh, so I'm sorry?
That's okay. Um, yeah, so August 3rd is gonna be here so quickly, and I'm hearing more and more really positive feedback about having the ability to wear scrubs. So if that could be something that could be communicated out as soon as possible, whether or not that's going to be acceptable, because teachers are doing their back-to-school shopping, too, and if it can save them some money and still be within the dress code for these times, then I feel like many would appreciate it. And then the second thing, just quickly, is I am concerned about what happens when custodians have to be out, and do we have like a service? I know we want, we're trying to get away from contracted, but, but like, where would we get replacement custodians to do the work that's needed? And you don't have to answer me right now, but just
We've discussed.
Okay.
And, and I'm, thank, thank you for that. There is another concern, too. Will kids that have chosen to come to traditional, will they be allowed to bring their own Clorox wipes or whatever? Is that gonna be, we need to let parents know that, because
Yeah, they're saying, they're saying they're armed with wipes.
Yeah, I think older kids would be able, and some younger kids, too, clean their own area.
Oh, yeah.
And that could help teachers, maybe if teachers put those things on their, their back-to-school return list, it helps sanitize those types of things. It doesn't make, you can't find Clorox wipes anywhere right now, but, but still, they need, the parents need to know that if they can bring those things, that those kids can bring them. And it doesn't violate any material safety data situations like that.
My final thing just had to do, again, with the bus. It continues to be a very deep source of concern for me. We don't wanna be transporting the virus, you know, to schools, and we wanna mitigate that as much as we can. And, and again, this is obviously a benefit for many, many families, is to be able to put their kids on the bus, but when it comes down to what can we do collectively and as individuals, now is the time. If it is not a hardship or impossible for you to transport your child or create community car pools, you know, it's not something I can say, you know, you need to do this, but it's an idea of a way to really be able to make a difference in, in reducing the numbers of students on our buses and mitigating that risk. So again, community, continue with all of your input, and now it's also time to shift to action. So those were my three things. Thanks.
All right. Boy, people are really hitting us up.
Yeah.
People are really hitting us up. Thank you, thank you, everybody that sent us texts and emails and all that kind of stuff like that. We, we are listening. There being no further discussion? I need a motion. Entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. King, moved by Ms. Ror, seconded by Ms. King. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Leading adjourn at 1:21 PM.